I'd like to welcome everyone to a regular meeting of the Saratoga County Board of Supervisors for August seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-one, and ask that the clerk of the board please call the roll.
Supervisor Allen.
Yeah.
Barrett.
Here.
Connolly.
Here.
Gaston.
Here.
Grasso.
Here.
Knieuwski.
Yeah.
Kuzneers.
Here.
Lent.
Here.
Lawler is excused. Lucia.
Here.
O'Connor.
Here.
Peck is excused. Hemrick.
Here.
Raymond is excused. Richardson.
Here.
Shoff.
Here.
Smith is excused. Tollison.
Here.
Beach.
Here.
Winnie.
Here.
Wood.
Here.
Wright.
Here.
Zlatnik is excused. Quorum is present.
Thank you, and would please ask that everyone rise for attention to the flag and remain standing for our chapter. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Dear Lord, as we enter the final days of summer and the days are growing shorter, the dews heavier, and the birds are beginning to flock, we thank you for this wonderful summer season, for all of the highly successful summer events, and for the abundant and bountiful life that you made possible. We are thankful for the many successes and positive achievements that you have made possible for Saratoga County. This month of August brings within a sense of urgency. Summer is drawing to a close, and there is a need to do things that we have put off. May we finish the summer with a burst of energy and renewed enthusiasm to accomplish all of our goals. While we work on challenging issues in difficult times, let us never lose focus on how fortunate we are. May we learn from the past as we look to the future while enjoying today. We ask that you grant us understanding and wisdom so that we make the best possible decisions. Lastly, we ask that you help us maintain the security of our country and keep all members of our military service safe. We pray this in your name. Amen.
Thank you very much Supervisor Wood. In just a few weeks, our country will mark the twentieth anniversary of the tragic events of September eleventh, twenty-two thousand and one. This attack on our nation aimed to disrupt our American way of life. It failed. The American spirit grew stronger in the decades since. This anniversary is an important reminder to all of us that we continue to honor those who lost their lives in the attacks and those who have defended our freedom in the global war on terror. We must strive every day to live in a way worthy of their sacrifices. Now, I will read this proclamation that is being offered by the Saratoga County Board of Supervisors. It's in recognition of the twentieth anniversary, September eleventh, twenty-two thousand and one. Whereas twenty years ago on September eleventh, two thousand and one, the United States of America came under attack by cowardly terrorists who sought to destroy our American way of life, and whereas the residents of Saratoga County joined their fellow Americans in remembering and honoring those who lost their lives in the attack on this nation, and whereas the world witnessed the countless acts of bravery, heroism, selflessness, valor, courage, and compassion by first responders, ordinary citizens, and volunteers who risked their lives to assist in the rescue of those injured as a result of the attacks. And whereas in the days, months, and years since these attacks, Saratoga County residents, emboldened by the American spirit, joined their fellow citizens and responded with remarkable patriotism and unity. And whereas September eleventh, two thousand and one is indelibly marked as a day to never be forgotten in Saratoga County, and whereas the tragic events of September eleventh, two thousand and one tested the resolve of our country, it reminded us of the values of liberty and freedom upon which this nation was founded, and today, our nation remains steadfast and are resolved to protect and defend our cherished way of life. And whereas the United States is unified in our purpose to prevent further tragedies like those experienced on September eleventh, two thousand and one, and its right to honor the men and women of our armed forces who have fought tirelessly to keep us safe from further attacks on U.S. soil, and whereas we offer our support and condolences to the families and friends of those who lost loved ones as a result of the attacks and the ongoing global war on terror, now therefore be it proclaimed that Saratoga County Board of Supervisors proclaims recognition of the twentieth anniversary of September eleventh, two thousand and one in Saratoga County and call this day to the attention of all citizens. To witness thereof, we have here in two set our hand and effects the seal of Saratoga County Board of Supervisors the seventeenth day of August, two thousand and twenty-one. Chairman Theodore T. Kuzneers and Vice Chair Jonathan G. Shoff. And at this time, I'd like to ask Carl and Frank to come up. Also, in further recognition of the twentieth anniversary of nine eleven, Saratoga County will be proudly displaying a new memorial flag at our September eleventh Remembrance Site just outside this building. This is the official state nine eleven flag, and it is being presented here by our Director of County Veterans and Services and U.S. Army Veteran Frank Clement and our Commissioner of Emergency Services and U.S. Naval Reserve Officer Carl Zelman. I'd also like to thank John Kirby also from our Buildings and Grounds Division of Public Works for securing this flag for the county. Thank you, gentlemen. Also, in recognition of the nonprofits in Saratoga County, today I'm issuing a proclamation honoring the nonprofits through nonprofits throughout Saratoga County for their hard work and dedication to the communities throughout the ongoing COVID- nineteen pandemic. Early in the pandemic, nonprofit leaders began to collaborate, collaborate, I'm sorry, collaborate with one another to find ways to help serve the most vulnerable among us. Through a request made by Ellen Sacks, a representative of the Community Foundation of the Greater Capital Region, Saratoga County worked with nonprofits to coordinate efforts and provide resources to raise awareness of the virus, educate residents on the protection measures, and to distribute PPEs. Undoubtedly, the leaders and staff of those nonprofits worked tirelessly to get the job done and help their neighbors. For that reason, I'm pleased to recognize the nonprofit community for their unprecedented efforts to best serve the residents of Saratoga County. On behalf of the nonprofits, I welcome Maggie Frack, the Executive Director of Wellspring, and Ellen Sacks to receive this proclamation. This is a special day here in Saratoga County. I'm pleased to announce the graduation of twelve women from the first Saratoga County Women in Government Leadership Program, which encourages young women to participate in local government. This program is developed in coordination with the Seroptimists International of Saratoga County, and this is a, this was the first pilot program here in Saratoga County, which is designed to increase the knowledge and about education in local government while also building competence and leadership skills. This program provided an opportunity for high school-aged women from various school districts in Saratoga County to learn about their county government, learn about our various departmental operations, and build representation and participation. Curriculum for the Dreamit B series was presented by many members of the Seroptimists over the six-week program. Additionally, New York State Association of Counties assisted in the creation of this pilot program to be potentially expanded across New York State. The launch of this program, an innovative program, took place during the National County Government Month, which is also the hundredth year of the Seroptimists of Saratoga County, when they provided guidance, where they provided guidance, education content, hands-on support for the programming, as well as other assistance. We want to recognize and thank all the leaders who helped in bringing this program to fruition, including NISAC Executive Director Steve Aquario, NISAC Women's Leadership Council Chair Martha Saubrey, Saratoga County Seroptimist President Sandra Roulet, and Susan Bartkowski, as well as Lieutenant Governor, soon-to-be Governor of New York Kathy Hochul, and various county leaders and staff. Also, a special thanks to Marcy McNamara, Jim Miklowski, Kevin Tollison, and his Business Park Avenue Confectionery, and as well as other officials that were very instrumental in the program, which includes Senator Daphne Jordan, Assemblywoman Mary Beth Walsh, Supervisor Tara Gaston, as well as Supervisors Jean Raymond and Sandra Winnie, District Attorney Karen Hagan, Sheriff Zerlo and members of his leadership team, County Clerk Craig Hayner and Deputy County Clerk Shawna Sutton, County Clerk, I'm sorry, County Treasurer Drew Girash, Information and Technology Director Eileen Bennett, Animal Shelter Director Penny Heritage, County Public Defender Drew Blumenberg, Mental Health Director Michael Prezioso, as well as Bill Frucci and Roger Scherer of the Board of Elections. In addition, I'd also like to thank Saratoga County Historian Lauren Roberts and Cheryl Moreau Employment and Training. And I believe that the clerk of the board is going to call out the names, and I shall present the certificates of completion.
Elise Butler from Stillwater High School. Maeve Hamilton Jones from Saratoga Springs High School. Harangue Kim from Shenandoah High School. U.G. Low from Shenandoah High School. Kate McLaughlin from Shenandoah High School. Eleanor McNamara, Saratoga Springs High School. Julia Montesano, Shenandoah High School. Shakti Mathukrishnan, Saratoga Springs High School. Claire Pelletier Hoblock, Skylerville High School. And Jayla Perkins from the Ballston Spa High School.
Thank you very much, ladies.
Sorry. Squashy win.
That's right. If it looks something, that'd be good.
Get my timer running here. This is the name of the person that was signed up to speak. Just an introduction.
Okay, moving on to item six on the agenda is listed as public input. At this time, we have one individual that has requested to address the board, Robert Ingles from Saratoga Springs. And just a reminder, you will have three minutes to address the board.
Ladies and gentlemen, Board Supervisors and people of Saratoga County, can you guys hear me okay? This map?
Yes.
Okay. Well, my name's Robert Ingles, and, you know, the reason I'm homeless in New York is because when I was living in California, somebody from New York stole an inheritance of over a million dollars from me, and, well, from his mother and I. And, you know, I'm looking for this guy. And I haven't been having any success. I tried to get the VA guy who was just here, Frank, to help me out, and, you know, the only help I got from this guy was he had me abducted, and they stole my blood so they could test it for drugs, which they didn't find anything. But, you know, that didn't really help me at all. I'm kind of done talking to him. I think that's a Fourth Amendment issue probably taken over the county sometime in the future. And, you know, everything I noticed about, you know, I don't know about different areas of the county, but in general, you know, it just seemed that, you know, when I got here, people knew everything about me except my name. You know, called gossip rumors, you know, spread around by who knows who. And every time, every time it was spoken, it changes a little bit, mostly lies. So, yeah, I figured I'd come up here, so at least you know my name, you know, you're telling lies about me, but, you know, because, you know, well, the first thing was, oh my God, the guy, what kind of drugs is he on? So they actually dug me and stole my blood to test it for drugs, and then what did they find? Nothing, absolutely nothing. And so they're wrong. And, you know, most of the time, gossip is lies, you know? Can't put it down in writing, sign it and hand it to me? I'd rather they didn't say it. But, yeah, so basically, that's my introduction. We'll get to that Fourth Amendment thing at some time in the future, and y'all have a wonderful day.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ingles. Item seven on the agenda is approval of minutes. Would somebody like to move July twentieth, two thousand and twenty-one, set of minutes? Moved by Supervisor Lucia. Is there a second? Seconded by Supervisor Wood. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Correspondents?
Letter from County Attorney Michael Harknett appointing Mary Beth A. Hunt as Assistant County Attorney effective August twentieth, two thousand and twenty-one, with a term expiration of December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one.
Received and filed, and welcome, and congratulations on your appointment, Mary Beth.
Letter from Nex Amp Incorporated notifying Saratoga County of their intent to develop a ground-mounted, ground-mounted solar facility in Moreau, New York.
Forwarded to the Saratoga County IDA.
Resolution from the city, Saratoga Springs City Council requesting a resolution from the Saratoga County Board of Supervisors for submittal to the State Liquor Authority to prohibit the sale of alcoholic beverages for on-premise consumption to the hours from two AM to, and ten AM on Sunday, and two AM and eight AM on any other day.
Copy to all supervisors. Reports of committees. Any reports of committees? Seeing none, we'll move on to resolutions.
Resolution two nineteen, introduced by Technology and Resiliency, amending Resolution one fifty-one of two thousand and twenty-one to authorize the Technology and Resiliency Committee to approve change orders to the agreement with Presentation Concepts Corporation. Budget impact statement, no budget impact. Resolution two twenty, introduced by Real Property Tax, authorizing a tax refund in the town of Clifton Park. Budget impact statement, no budget impact. Funds are available in the two thousand and twenty-one budget to cover this refund. Resolution two twenty-one, introduced by Human Resources and Insurance, amending the two thousand and twenty-one compensation schedule to create a position under public health services. Budget impact statement, none. Funds are allocated within the two thousand and twenty-one budget. Resolution two twenty-two, introduced by Health and Human Services, amending Resolution two hundred of two thousand and twenty, authorizing amendments to mental health contracts to include state-funded cost of living increases, and amending the two thousand and twenty-one budget in relation thereto. Budget impact statement, none. One hundred percent state aid. Resolution two twenty-three, introduced by Health and Human Services, authorizing the acceptance of additional state aid from Health Research, Inc., for the ELC COVID- nineteen Enhanced Detection Non-Lab Grant, and amending the two thousand and twenty-one budget in relation thereto. Budget impact statement, none. One hundred percent state aid. Resolution two twenty-four, introduced by Health and Human Services, accepting an epidemiology and laboratory capacity reopening schools grant for public health services, and amending the two thousand and twenty-two county budget in relation thereto. Budget impact statement, none. One hundred percent state aid. Resolution two twenty-five, introduced by Health and Human Services, authorizing an agreement with Quadrant Biosciences, Inc., for COVID- nineteen screening, diagnostic, and lab services to provide schools with COVID- nineteen testing resources. Budget impact statement, none. One hundred percent state aid. Resolution two twenty-six, introduced by Health and Human Services, authorizing contact tracing services agreements with Jessica McCamey, Hannah Ives, Mary Ann Priest, and Brianna McLean. Budget impact statement, none. Costs associated with this contract will be covered by a Health Research, Inc. grant. Resolution two twenty-seven, introduced by Buildings and Grounds, authorizing the acceptance of an American Rescue Plan Act of two thousand and twenty-one Airport Grant from the Federal Aviation Administration. Budget impact statement, none. One hundred percent federal aid. Resolution two twenty-eight, introduced by Public Safety, authorizing the chairman to enter into an agreement with the New York State Division of Homeland Security and Emergency Services to accept a two thousand and twenty-one Homeland Security Program grant, and amending the two thousand and twenty-one budget in relation thereto. Budget impact statement, none. One hundred percent state aid. Resolution two twenty-nine, introduced by Public Safety, authorizing the chairman to enter into intermunicipal agreements with participating municipalities for two thousand and twenty-two Saratoga County Animal Shelter Services. Budget impact statement, no budget impact. Resolution two thirty, introduced by Public Safety, authorizing the chairman to enter into a cooperative agreement with the United States Department of the Navy for the lease of night vision goggles. Budget impact statement, no budget impact. Resolution two thirty-one, introduced by Trails and Open Space, authorizing the chair of the board to enter into necessary agreements to apply for, accept, and administer a New York State Snowmobile Grant in Aid Program grant, and authorizing the issuance of a negative declaration under SEAKER. Budget impact statement, none. One hundred percent state aid. Resolution two thirty-two, introduced by Trails and Open Space, authorizing an amendment to the agreement with Greenway Conservancy of the Hudson Valley, Inc., for the construction of a section of the Champlain Canalway Trail in the town, village of Waterford. Budget impact statement, none. One hundred percent of the funding for this project will be provided through a grant with Hudson River Valley Greenway with no cost to Saratoga County. Resolution two thirty-three, introduced by Trails and Open Space, authorizing a construction agreement with WMJ Keller &amp; Sons Construction Corporation for the construction of a portion of the Champlain Canalway Trail in the town and village of Waterford. Budget impact statement, none. One hundred, one hundred percent of funding for this project will be provided through a grant with Hudson River Valley Greenway with no cost to Saratoga County. Resolution two thirty-four, introduced by Trails and Open Space, awarding two thousand and twenty-one trails grants and amending the budget in relation thereto. Budget impact statement, an allocation from fund balance in the amount of seven thousand eleven dollars and forty-four cents is required to fully fund all the trail applications. Resolution two thirty-five, introduced by Government Review and Efficiency, amending the Policies and Procedures Manual under Operating Budget Procedures. Budget impact statement, no budget impact. Resolution two thirty-six, introduced by Law and Finance, rescinding Resolutions one seventy of two thousand and eighteen, one seventy-one of two thousand and eighteen, and one ninety-five of two thousand and twenty. Budget impact statement, no budget impact. Resolution two thirty-seven, introduced by Law and Finance, approving the proposed construction of a biosolids digester facility by Saratoga County Sewer District Number One and adopting a negative declaration under SEAKER. Budget impact statement, no budget impact. Resolution two thirty-eight, introduced by Law and Finance, bond resolution authorizing the issuance of fifty-one million nine hundred thousand dollar bonds of the county of Saratoga, or so much therefore as may be necessary to finance the cost of construction of a biosolids digester facility by Saratoga County Sewer District Number One, stating the estimated maximum cost thereof is fifty-one million nine hundred thousand dollars, stating the plan of financing, providing for a tax to pay the principal of an interest on said bonds, and providing for reimbursement by Saratoga County Sewer District Number One to said county. Budget impact statement, none. This project will be entirely underwritten by the sewer district. Resolution two thirty-nine, introduced by Law and Finance, approving the proposed construction upgrades to Saratoga County Sewer District Number One wastewater treatment plant to properly treat ammonia and meet new limits proposed by New York State DEC. Budget impact statement, no budget impact. Resolution two forty, introduced by Law and Finance, bond resolution authorizing the issuance of thirty-three million one hundred thousand dollar bonds of the county of Saratoga, or so much therefore as may be necessary, to finance the cost of construction of upgrades to ammonia treatment facilities by Saratoga County Sewer District Number One, stating the estimated maximum cost thereof is thirty-three million one hundred thousand dollars, stating the plan of financing, providing for a tax to pay the principal of an interest on said bonds, and providing for reimbursement by Saratoga County Sewer District Number One to said county. Budget impact statement, none. This project will be entirely underwritten by the sewer district. Resolution two forty-one, introduced by Law and Finance, authorizing the chairman to enter into an agreement with Bond Shenick &amp; King, P L L C, for professional legal services relative to the issuance of serial bonds in an amount not to exceed eighty-five million dollars, to finance the construction of a biosolids digester facility and ammonia treatment upgrades to Saratoga County Sewer District's Number One facilities. Budget impact statement, no budget impact. The anticipated costs for legal services will be paid by bond council proceeds at the closing of the sale of the bonds. Resolution two forty-two, introduced by Law and Finance, authorizing an amendment to the agreement with CKM Electrical Services, Inc., to provide additional electrical construction services to the Saratoga County Sewer District's Number One Riverside Number One Pump Station. Budget impact statement, no budget impact. Funds are available in the sewer district's two thousand and twenty-one budget. Resolution two forty-three, introduced by Law and Finance, authorizing the conveyance of a sewer line easement over county lands in the town of Half Moon. Budget impact statement, no budget impact. Resolution two forty-four, introduced by Law and Finance, adopting a local law identified as introductory number five of two thousand and twenty-one, print number one, entitled "A Local Law of the County of Saratoga" to repeal "Local Law Three" of nineteen seventy-nine. Budget impact statement, no budget impact. Resolution two forty-five, introduced by Law and Finance,
And at this time, entertain any requests for separate votes on the resolutions.
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Beech.
I asked for separate votes on 238 and 240.
238 and 240. Any other requests for separate votes? If not, entertain a motion to adopt resolutions absent Resolutions 238 and 240.
I'll make that motion, Chairman.
Supervisor Knousky, is there a second? Supervisor Lucia? Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Supervisor Allen.
Yes.
Barrett.
Yes.
Connally.
Yes.
Gaston.
Yes.
Grasso.
Yes.
Knousky.
Yes.
Kuzneers.
Yes.
Lant.
Yes.
Lucia.
Yes.
O'Connor.
Yes.
Hemrick.
Yes.
Richardson.
Yes.
Schaaf.
Yes.
Tollison.
Yes.
Beech.
Yes.
Winnie.
Yes.
Wood.
Yes.
And Wright.
Yes.
Motion passes.
And would someone like to move Resolution 238 for discussion?
I'll make that term.
Supervisor Gaston, is there a second? Supervisor Knousky. Any discussion? Supervisor Beech.
Yeah, just wanted to, I'll be voting in favor of these, but I just wanted to make the point that I made at the Law and Finance Committee that when we authorize these bonds issued out for the sewer district, that the financing and payment of those bonds fall back on the sewer district users. And as one of the largest communities that uses sewers in the county, just wanted to state that it'd be nice if we could find another way of doing this. I know, I think when we originally built the sewer district, it was an overall tax on the entire county. And when we do these expansions, they fall on the users. So I would like to just make that point for this resolution. You can copy my comments for the other resolutions as well. I won't order you twice. But I am voting in favor, but I just want to make that point on the record before we vote. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Beech. Supervisor Knousky.
Was there, just ask, was there a consideration as a tax for a town-wide or county-wide improvement district? Just to ask, because we've done town-wide improvement districts before, we're able to fund good projects, everybody chips in, it benefits one area, not another, but for good reason, and everybody goes along with it. It took six years to get one across, but it finally went through. I don't know if you could apply that to the county. Just a thought or ask.
Thank you Supervisor Knousky. Any other discussion? I'm sorry, I couldn't, is your light on? There you go. Supervisor Gaston.
Thank you. I would just like to bold highlight the comments of Supervisor Beech for the benefit of our community in Saratoga Springs. I'd like there to be some consideration in regards to how they're paid. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Gaston. Any other comments, discussion? Supervisor Lant? Okay. Then I guess we'll.
Someone's picking at me.
I can't see Supervisor Gaston's, but I can see yours. All right, call the roll, please.
Supervisor Allen.
Yes.
Barrett.
Yes.
Connally.
Yes.
Gaston.
This is on 238, Alan.
Correct.
Yes, thank you.
Grasso.
I recede myself from the vote.
Knousky.
Yes.
Kuzneers.
Yes.
Lant.
Yes.
Kuzneers.
Yes.
Lant.
Yes.
Lucia.
Yes.
O'Connor.
Yes.
Hemrick.
Yes.
Richardson.
Yes.
Schaaf.
Yes.
Tollison.
Yes.
Beech.
Yes.
Winnie.
Yes.
Wood.
Yes.
And Wright.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Would someone like to move Resolution 240 for discussion?
Supervisor Gaston, is there a second?
Supervisor Knousky. Any discussion? Supervisor Beech.
Yeah, just wanted to, I'll be voting in favor of these, but I just wanted to make the point that I made at the Law and Finance Committee that when we authorize these bonds issued out for the sewer district, that the financing and payment of those bonds falls back on the sewer district users. And as one of the largest communities that uses sewers in the county, just wanted to state that it'd be nice if we could find another way of doing this. I know, I think when we originally built the sewer district, it was an overall tax on the entire county. And when we do these expansions, they fall on the users. So I would like to just make that point for this resolution. You can copy my comments for the other resolutions as well. I won't order you twice. But I am voting in favor, but I just want to make that point on the record before we vote. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Beech. Supervisor Knousky.
Was there, just ask, was there a consideration as a tax for a town-wide or county-wide improvement district? Just to ask, because we've done town-wide improvement districts before, we're able to fund good projects, everybody chips in, it benefits one area, not another, but for good reason, and everybody goes along with it. It took six years to get one across, but it finally went through. I don't know if you could apply that to the county. Just a thought or ask.
Thank you Supervisor Knousky. Any other discussion? I'm sorry, I couldn't, is your light on? There you go. Supervisor Gaston.
Thank you. I would just like to bold highlight the comments of Supervisor Beech for the benefit of our community in Saratoga Springs. I'd like there to be some consideration in regards to how they're paid. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Gaston. Any other comments, discussion? Supervisor Lant? Okay. Then I guess we'll.
Someone's picking at me.
I can't see Supervisor Gaston's, but I can see yours. All right, call the roll, please.
Supervisor Allen.
Yes.
Barrett.
Yes.
Connally.
Yes.
Gaston.
This is on 238, Alan.
Correct.
Yes, thank you.
Grasso.
I recede myself from the vote.
Knousky.
Yes.
Kuzneers.
Yes.
Lant.
Yes.
Lucia.
Yes.
O'Connor.
Yes.
Hemrick.
Yes.
Richardson.
Yes.
Schaaf.
Yes.
Tollison.
Yes.
Beech.
Yes.
Winnie.
Yes.
Wood.
Yes.
And Wright.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Would someone like to move Resolution 240 for discussion?
Supervisor Gaston, is there a second?
Supervisor Knousky. Discussion? And, all right, roll call.
Supervisor Allen.
Yes.
Barrett.
Yes.
Connally.
Yes.
Gaston.
Yes.
Grasso.
I recede myself from the vote.
Knousky.
Yes.
Kuzneers.
Yes.
Lant.
Yes.
Lucia.
Yes.
O'Connor.
Yes.
Hemrick.
Yes.
Richardson.
Yes.
Schaaf.
Yes.
Tollison.
Yes.
Beech.
Yes.
Winnie.
Yes.
Wood.
Yes.
And Wright.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, and that concludes action on the proposed resolutions for today. Agenda item 14 is unfinished business and new proposals. Would anybody like to speak on that? Seeing none, we'll move on to other business. And there, I believe, is a chairman's appointment.
Workforce Advisory Board, Scott Chamberlain, Director of Human Resources, with the term expiring December 31st, 2022.
Thank you. Other business?
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Beech.
Yes, just wanted to make a quick comment regarding our Department of Public Works. This week, or actually starting the end of last week, they are repaving currently County Number 43, which is Geiser Road in Saratoga Springs, doing it during track season, which is a pretty good event to do, but they did a great job of milling for two days and paving in one day. They did the whole thing, basically, all at once. It was amazing to see all those trucks out there on Geiser Road and doing all that work. It was a little bit of an inconvenience for traffic out there, but they did a real fantastic job. It looks great. They still have to do the striping and everything on it to finish it up, but I want to give kudos to the Department of Public Works for a great job on getting Geiser Road done as quickly as they got it done with as minimal of a disruption as possible. So, thank you Chad and all the team at DPW.
Thank you Supervisor Beech. On behalf of the Board, I echo the same sentiments as Supervisor Beech.